Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the November 14th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board. Call to order. The Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, we're grateful to be gathered in this county planning board meeting. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve the community, grateful for those who have brought requests to this committee that we might adjudicate according to the laws of the state of North Carolina. We pray that we might be understanding, patient, and complete in our analysis and our decisions. Bless us to be kind to each other and help us in all that we do at this time in this meeting. In this, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of tonight's agenda.
We have a vacancy up here tonight. Do you want to call one of the alternates up?
No, we have a quorum, so...
Okay, just checking.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote is unanimous and the agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the October 10th, 2022 meeting.
I move that we adopt those minutes.
Made and seconded to adopt the minutes. God, I'm stuck on that word. Adopt the minutes from the October 10th, 2022 meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Vote is unanimous and the minutes are approved. Ladies and gentlemen, the following is for your information. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan, and the Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by this board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approval that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related, but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The Technical Review Committee is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Department of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and the North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality, among others. Each case on this agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the planning board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief this board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the planning board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. And at this time, I'll stop and ask if everyone's had an opportunity to sign that wishes to speak. We can accommodate you now. The public comment period is not a forum for a dialogue or debate with the planning board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the planning board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. The chairman will open the public comment period. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. The chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. When recognized, each person signed up to speak will do so in a civil manner from the podium. Before beginning to speak, you will be asked to provide your name and address for the record. Unless otherwise directed, all testimony, evidence, and comment shall be directed to the planning board, not to the staff or the audience. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. At this time, we call upon staff to present our first case rezoning request, 2022-23.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There we go. Yes, this is the rezoning case 2022-23. It is a request of a zoning map amendment, rezoning the property from light industrial conditional use to light industrial conditional district for a site plan amendment per the original conditions. The background on this is this is an older conditional zoning from the past. One of the conditions in that original permit was that any site amendments must go back for the board for approval and so on and so forth. So they're here back because they'd like to add a building to the site.
Excuse me, they want to add a building?
Add a building to the site. This is at 161 Gold Hill Road. Again, this is a conditional zoning. You can see it's where in our southwest corridor of the county. Here's our zoning map. You see it's that parcel just right off the highway as you go up Gold Hill. No real environmental features, so to speak, in the area that would be impacted by this. It is in our G3 growth corridor, which does, of course, allow for more intense uses. And whoops, here we go. Here's the site plan amendment. You can see the proposed building there towards the middle of the property and towards the south. They are requesting not just the site plan amendment, but relief as well from our current setbacks. If you'll notice, it would still be not as forgiving as the original setbacks that were on the property. If you notice, the current building on the property is really close to the property line as would have been allowed in the past. Currently, they would have to be 50 feet. They're asking to be 25 feet, I believe. As well as, staff would also like to add in the condition that any future amendments that are consistent with the ordinances at the time of amendment would not need approval of the board, but could be done in-house. Anything such as this forgiving of the setbacks would have to come back before the same procedure. So, as I said, this is in our G3 land class. It calls for a bunch of mixed-use centers, residential to industrial types of uses. It extends up all the way up to 220. Our economic development goals in our land use plan do call for supporting any expansion of existing uses. And this is in keeping not with just the land use plan, but we also find it reasonable considering the other site characteristics that are on the property. So staff is recommending approval for consistency and reasonableness.
Marzy, can you go back to that view right there? You said that they're asking for a setback of 25 feet from the property line. The dimension on the drawing shows 38 and 1/2.
Is it 38 and 1/2? I'm sorry, I can't read the... It's too small on the screen. I didn't bring my map up with me. I think originally we had talked about 25 to begin with, but then when they got their survey, we decided what the final number would be. It's whatever the dimension on this plot is. I apologize for that. Like I said, I left my map over there.
All right, but the ordinance calls for 50?
Or you can see the dashed in line there. The ordinance calls for 50 largely because this is next to a residentially zoned property. If it had not been next to a residentially zoned property, let's say it was next to another highway commercial or light industrial, it'd be a zero line setback. So, given the other site characteristics under the original approvals of this property, we feel that it's inconsistency with the actual property in of itself. So we think it's reasonable.
Received any phone calls or emails?
We got one inquiry, not in favor or against, just wanting to know what was going on.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Marziano? Chair recognizes Julie Talbert.
You say the reason that there's the 25-foot setback is because of the proximity to a residential property. How many feet from the line of the residential property is the actual building? Do you have... Is that correct? It's 208 feet from the actual property line where the building is actually going to sit?
That's to the rear property line, yes. The forgiving part would be the south line.
Right, yeah. So... Yeah, so that's 38 and 1/2. So what... Do you know how many acres the adjoining property is? And if it's a residential, where is the actual residence?
I don't believe there's an actual residence on the property. It's just residentially zoned. You can see the track of land here below the hash mark. It's large acreage, abutting the highway and Gold Hill.
It's 101 acres.
Okay, yeah.
And there's no house... There's no property...
Yeah, there's...
There's nothing on it.
Mostly wooden.
There's no, like, home dwellings on it? Okay, all right. And the only reason you need the 50-foot setback or to comply totally with the ordinance is that is because of the zoning on this 101 acres?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
But like I've said, as we pointed out, the original site design is far closer to that northern boundary than this would be to its southern boundary. So we still feel that it is a good compromise.
And we're talking, what, 11 and 1/2 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Chairman? Chair recognizes Corey Scott.
So why couldn't they move the building up further? Is it because they couldn't get your equipment through there in order to get it to the back of the property?
That's my understanding. The applicant is here, if you'd like to ask him that, but that was our discussion was, you know, they wouldn't be able to make safe access because what the site doesn't show you, there's also a ramp coming off that back of that property. There wouldn't be a safe... There wouldn't be safe maneuverability to move the building closer.
Clarification question?
Chair recognizes James Fink.
39.6, that's from the proposed building to the fence line, but the property line's an additional 9.95 feet, correct?
No, the dimensional arrows go to the property line. It's just they merged into that fence line a little bit. The arrows still point to the property line. Because I had the same question earlier until I blew it up and looked at it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Marziano? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You said that the applicant was here? And that would be... Mr. Bradshaw, do you wish to speak?
I got a couple of questions.
Does anyone have any questions? And for the record, please state your name and address.
So I'm Jonathan Bradshaw, and this property is our business location. It's 161 Gold Hill Road, Madison, North Carolina.
And your chair recognizes Julie Talbert.
Mr. Bradshaw, just to follow up, will you explain to us firstly, what exactly, you know, what are you going to do? You know, what's your vision for this property? And what keeps you from moving that building back 11 and 1/2 feet?
Right, farther from the property line, you're asking. So this is just going to be a metal warehouse. It's a 90 by 40, 90 feet wide, 40 feet deep. Just metal structure warehouse for us to store materials. And we need it because we're just simply out of space, out of storage space. So as Marzy said, what the drawing does not depict is there is actually a ramp. So there's like an offloading ramp that's up against the original building. And as you go to the rear of the building, it actually slopes up to the back where there is a big roll-up door. So what we have is a driveway that enters. It has some parking. And then that driveway kind of chokes down to roughly 20 or so feet, which is the vehicle traffic. So any of our, of course, our work trucks that come in and out, or any tractor-trailers that's coming to unload, they pass through there. So if we move the building farther up, obviously, there would be no access or egress back to the rear of the building. So what we've done with this is we've got it as, you know, as close, as getting right up to our driveway that passes through that way of egress. But in doing so, you know, obviously, we're infringing on the 50-foot boundary. So and if you look at it, they've made it square to the original building, so the offsets are a little bit different. One is the shortest is 38 and 1/2. I think the others may be 30, 39, or something like that. But it is, yeah, it just simply, we have nowhere else to put it or move it to get it off of the property line.
And what is your business?
Well, we're an electrical contractor.
Okay. And do you have frequent deliveries from, say, box trucks or semi trucks?
Oh, yes, ma'am, yeah.
Okay, so you really, you need this space?
We do, we certainly do need it, yes. We've, you know, we've done all that we could with the space we have with shelvings and so forth. But and then with circumstances with things being long lead time items, we've had to order things prematurely just to have on hand, and so we've just simply run out of space.
I have no further questions.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yes, sir.
There are no speakers signed up for this case.
If you go look at the Google map and look at the satellite form, you can see where that ramp is, and it makes it really clear that they really don't have any room to move much further in from the property line in order to put that size building to the needed.
You know, for the few feet involved in the setback, I don't see that as being unreasonable. Anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, the board has reviewed case 2022-23 rezoning to Light Industrial Conditional District, LICD, with site amendment plan as required by NCGS 160D. Makes the following findings. The proposed action is consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The zoning amendment is supported by the intent and descriptions of the G3 land class. This parcel is located in the G3 land class, mixed-use centers corridors, according to the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, characterized by a diverse mix of uses. This area includes the county's targeted growth corridor. The G3 land class extends along US 220 corridor. Appropriate zoning districts in this corridor include light industrial, among other mixed uses. Economic development goals in the county land place plan focus on expanding industrial opportunities. The proposed action is found to be reasonable because it is A. located in the G3 land class. This zoning request is directly supported by the Rockingham County Land Use Plan and future land use map. The economic development goal is under Section 4.2, support promoting and developing industrial sites, including existing sites. This is a conditional rezoning request that includes the following factors which would benefit the property. Owner maintains uses that are consistent with the current zoning relationships in this area. One, an SBA to follow a new structure. Two, conditional approval of atypical setback requirements given the relationship of the structure of the southern border of the parcel. Three, any current permitted uses or amendments consistent with a current UDO, including rules for development standards. Article 5, do not require future zoning amendments. Adjacent tracks include residential agricultural use. Other surrounding parcels feature a mixture of commercial, industrial, residential, and agricultural uses. Given the historical uses of this parcel, the proposed amendments will pose minimal impact on adjacent neighborhood parcels. I make the motion to recommend approval of this rezoning request to resume the specified parcel in the rezoning application to the requested zoning district based on the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes, as well as any and all agreed-upon conditions also incorporated into the motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve case number 2022-23. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote is unanimous and the planning board has decided to recommend to the county commissioners that this application be approved. And the next case on the agenda is case number 2022-24. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is 2022-24, a request for a zoning map amendment, rezoning from residential protected to residential agricultural. The location is at 144 Honey Road in the Huntsville Township. This is a straight rezoning. You'll notice that it's also in our southwest quadrant. The area is largely RP, immediately adjacent and in the vicinity, and then surrounded by RA further out. No real environmental impacts, so to speak, directly of the property. There are a few streams in the general vicinity. And this actually is funny. It's in the O2 land class, directly adjacent to the G1 land class. So it's like a boundary property. Characteristics of both could very well apply here. So as I said, this is in the O2 rural land class adjacent to the G1 class. Both of those classes do consider low-density agricultural uses and open land spaces. Our land use plan does recommend that these properties generally be zoned residential agriculture to begin with. However, as we stated, it is within a sea of RP. So staff doesn't feel that all the uses in RA may be reasonable for that property. So therefore, while it is consistent with the land use plan, we don't know if it is exactly reasonable at this time, given all the proposed uses that would be available to the RA zoning district. That being said, the applicant is here to discuss with you their desires. So if you have any questions of me at this time.
Did you get any calls?
We got two calls. We got one inquiry, and then we got one person opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed, but just the two calls.
Grounds for the opposition? Did they state any grounds for the opposition?
I didn't speak to them directly. Most of the grounds, I think, were just... Clarify for me, Victoria.
From what I understood, ill-fitting with the neighborhood, and there were also concerns about clearing before the rezoning took place.
Which I'll remind the board that we don't have any clearing regulations for less than an acre in the county as long as someone doesn't actually begin digging and excavating, so.
So if there are trees on the property, they could just knock them all down?
Under the current UDO regulations, yes, unless affected by...
If it's less than an acre.
If it's less than an acre. Unless affected by certain conditions under watershed restrictions, but that's not a critical watershed area, so those wouldn't apply.
Yeah, the land has been completely cleared. You can, if you drive by it.
It is cleared.
Yeah, a good portion of it, at least. I don't think it does the full...
Probably not the whole thing.
Doesn't do the whole property. Based on our very guess, it's still less than an acre that was disturbed.
Any other questions for Marzy? Okay, thank you.
I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Chair recognizes Julie Talbert. Cindy Hayward, sorry.
It's habit.
Their voices are very close.
Let me make sure I understand what you just said because this is 1.28 acres. They've already cleared the majority of the property. And you said that they could do that without any repercussions if it's less than an acre.
Right, it doesn't appear that they cleared more than an acre. So visually on sight, it looks like it's less than an acre that has been cleared.
Pretty clear to me.
True, but the property is deeper than the clearing. So without a survey to confirm, of which I'm not qualified to go stake the property lines and everything, we have to do our best guess using aerials and whatnot. And to us, it looks like it's still less than an acre developed or disturbed.
Wouldn't it be based on if it's more than an acre, they shouldn't have cleared anything yet?
If it's more than an acre, they have to get a permit from the state. It still wouldn't go through our offices.
Okay, okay.
I will point out, sorry, real quick, that while it is surrounded by RP, it's not that far removed from RA.
Is Amy Phillips here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, please state your name and address.
Amy Phillips, and the address that I'm here for is 144 Honey Road in Stokesdale.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know about your request?
Just, I don't want to go into too much detail or anything, but just that this was my grandpa's land, my popple in the hat back there. And he bought a lot of that. I don't want to say a lot, but he bought some of that acreage when he first moved out there a long time ago. And he has sold some of it way back in the back. And he had decided to gift me and my husband the 1.28 acres. We had actually stumbled upon, we have rented from an apartment the whole time that we've been together. And we stumbled upon a double-wide that was made for an elderly couple that was retired. And they thought that was the house they were going to spend the rest of their lives in, and they ended up changing their mind and moving to Florida. So we got a really amazing deal on it. Such an amazing deal that we thought it was going to be our first home, but we decided to make it our forever home just because we could think of so many more things that we could do with money, with a future family and everything. And so we were wanting to move it to this property. And when we were looking for property to put it on, we came across the idea of my popple. It's part of his land, and my sister's actually going to build across the road adjacent, well, kind of adjacent, I suppose, to where this will hopefully maybe one day go. But it was my fault because I've never dealt with anything like this before that I kind of, I didn't know that it wasn't zoned correctly. And I know that's not an excuse. I just, it was my fault, I didn't realize. So we did start going ahead with a lot of the process and then found out that it wasn't zoned for the trailer. So that was why we were putting in to hopefully get it rezoned for the RA so that maybe we could put our home there. And like he said, there's a lot. I know right in the surrounding areas, it's a lot of RP. But if you drive down Stanley Road, which is the road that Honey Road comes off of, there's all different kinds of houses. There's modulars and trailers, and it wouldn't be super out of place. There's modulators and trailers, and it's, it wouldn't be super out of place, and it's a very nice-looking double wide. Like I said, they thought they were going to spend the rest of their lives in it, so they put a lot of extra facelifts into it, if you want to say so. But we're going to put a front porch on it, and it's got a back porch on it, and all that good stuff. So I'm sorry if I rambled, but I just didn't know how much detail to go into.
Are the houses in the surrounding property to this one all stick-built houses?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
All stick-built, surrounding the property?
Surrounding, yeah.
Surrounding, yes. Mm-hmm.
You have a question? Chair recognizes Cindy Hayworth.
Have you spoke with the neighboring, your neighbors in this area, or is it all, does your grandfather own all this land?
No, so we've spoke with the neighbor to my, it's kind of hard to describe just with how the properties are laid out, but we've spoke to the people that are right next door to my grandpa, which is 170. I don't know if it'll show you on there which one 170 is, but they are totally fine with it. They've been friends with my mom and papa for a long time. I know the people, like I said, my sister was going to build across the street, across Honey Road. I know the people next to that spot are okay with it, just because I've spoke to them. I think, I haven't personally spoke to anybody else. I think my dad might have when he was out there with the people that were cutting down trees and everything, but that's the only people that I have personally spoke with that were okay with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions for Ms. Phillips?
I do.
Okay. Chair recognizes Jeff Callum.
What kind of underpinning or foundation would it be on?
Brick.
Okay. Next question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Marcy, if you don't mind, is the recommendation for denial based simply on the fact that the RA opens up additional uses besides residential?
That's solely the, the sole basis of the reason behind the recommendation.
Marcy, what-
Just because, like, sorry to interrupt, but, you know, it's, the size of the property versus all the potential uses would not be harmonious to the direct street itself. That's what the basis of the denial is, but again, as I pointed out, it's, it's only 200 feet removed from RA in most directions, so, 200, 300 feet.
Do we have allowable conditions?
No, this is a straight rezoning, not allowed to apply any kind of conditions to the property.
Would this go to the technical review board?
Nope. Sorry.
So, we're going to have to, if, if we let them put this dwelling there, it's going to be on faith.
It's going to be what, Jim?
On faith, that they will-
Well, regardless, if it becomes RA, they still have to meet all the other criteria and standards for a double wide in the RA district, a single, a double wide on an individual lot, which does require permanent masonry foundation, and it requires other regulations. From her conversations with Lynn and what she's presented here, it sounds like they will exceed those minimum standards.
But we can't legislate that.
Nope.
Got it.
Well, as again, as I said, we legislate the fact that that has to meet those minimums, but we can't make it more than those minimums.
Right, right, right.
Not germane to this, but somewhat germane to this. Staff has been discussing working back manufactured housing into RP, just much more stringent than we would allow it anywhere else. You know, different design characteristics, because we are allowed to put a lot of design characteristics on manufactured housing at the behest of not just a few citizens, but some other officials and things like that. We've been researching concepts, but we're still, we're still a long way away from that even seeing the light of day for just recommendation. So I can't sit there and say that it would ever happen, but it is something we've been considering back, because it used to be in the ordinances, you know, under special uses, which would allow conditions, and then it got removed. So we're looking at ways that that could open up those possibilities in the future, but that's not a guarantee in any, any lighter way. So I know that doesn't help with this decision-making, but that, that conditional aspect in those promises, we're looking at that for future type things.
Is, is there public water and sewer for this property, or is this septic and-
I believe this is all septic and, and well out there. We're not that far removed off Ellisboro Road at this point.
And you're, what you're doing is just following the letter of the law.
On the letter of our ordinances that we're required to do.
Which don't account for human condition.
We can't, can't regulate for everything, no matter how hard I try.
Want to point out that we've approved, how many RP to RA's have we approved in the last several months?
Well, we, we do it frequently, but usually the property is not surrounded by so many RP's as this one is.
And they're also in mixed areas. Again, I would iterate that, yes, these are stick-built in the immediate vicinity. You do have to drive out down Stanley to get to the closest manufactured house. I was not saying it's miles away by any means or any stretch. I mean, it's hundreds of feet, but still, again, we had to take that into consideration as well, because the state makes you look at a budding, even though we go out 1,000 feet in our local ordinances, you always look at a budding first. So that's what we had to do when we made our, our reasonableness statement.
Okay. All right, thanks, Marcy. Ms. Phillips, I have a question for you. You said that you already bought the double wide. Did you, have you already purchased it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So you purchased it before you knew all of this had to be done?
Right, but when I purchased it, I didn't know that I was going to be moving to that land. And, I mean, when I purchased it, we just jumped on it because it was such a good price that we thought, well, even if we do have to buy land, it'll still be a good deal, was our thinking, because right now it's on rented land.
And your plan, this, your plan is for this to be your forever home?
Yes, ma'am, just because we got such a good deal on it.
Thank you, Amy. Ladies and gentlemen, I think it's, if there's a concern about the possibility of the land being used for other purposes, the fact that they already bought this thing, this double wide, and have to have a place to put it, I think that's pretty strong evidence that that's what the intended use is going, is for.
Well, we've done this before, and we've, we've recent, as a matter of fact, we've recently had one of these. What are you talking about? Somebody's home. This is the tough one where you, there's the letter of the law, and then there's, there's a citizen, you know, trying to, trying to make a home, so.
Well, I wouldn't have an issue with it at all if it weren't a straight rezoning, and you could make it conditional just to what they're doing. But if they sell it, or sell, you know, leave the property, then, and it's under RA, then it is no conditions they can do, the next person can do anything they want to do. And you're completely surrounded by RP. And I'm not questioning, I'm not, I'm not questioning what you said you would do. I take your word. But sometimes life, life makes you change, and I understand you trying, wanting to get this land because it was given to you. I mean, can't get any better than that.
Would it be prudent for me to make the comment? Or not?
Well, you didn't, you didn't sign up, but if you want to, if you want to come forward, we'll hear you.
Are you okay with that?
Yep. For the record, state your name and address.
My name's Danny Dameron. I live at 170 Honey Road, which is right adjacent to this.
Yes.
I'm the father, and that's my father. I'm going to inherit his house when he passes away. I'm a caretaker for him and his mother, I mean, him and my mother right now, okay? So I'm going to be there until I die, okay? So we have another daughter that eventually wants to build in that same area, which hopefully they're going to be caretakers for me someday as well. So there are long-term plans for family to be involved in this, okay? It's not just her getting a piece of land that's surrounded by some other people. This is going to be sort of a family plot-type area, where there's a lot of family that's involved, okay? So as far as Ms. Hayworth, I think your concern was, or one of yours concerned was, that, hey, something could happen, and somebody wants to put a, you know, I don't know, maybe a storage building or a storage unit or something like that. We do have long-term plans for this, specifically until I die, because I'm going to be, we're kind of like a, building this little family area there, okay? If that helps alleviate any of that concern about the future of it being switched over to something else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for hearing me. Do you have any other questions for me? No? Okay. Thank you for hearing me.
Chair recognizes Julie.
I'm sorry, Cindy Hayworth. You guys switch.
We need to switch.
I need you two to switch seats.
Switch.
Sorry, folks.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'm having an identity problem tonight.
Because we look alike.
That's, yeah.
Hayworth, you have the floor.
Board has reviewed case 2022-24 rezoning to residential agricultural RA and makes the following findings as required by NCGG, NCGS 160D. The proposed action is generally consistent with the adopted Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, according, according to intent and descriptions of the O2 and G1 land class. This parcel is located in the O2 rural land class adjacent to the G1 land class according to the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, characterized by low-density residential development, agricultural uses, and open lands, page 47. The Rockingham County Land Use Plan suggests that areas in both the O2 and G1 land classes should generally be zoned residential agricultural RA, page 47. The proposed action is found to be unreasonable because this rezoning request will allow all uses in the residential agricultural RA district which would differ from those in adjacent and surrounding tracks, and which would be unsuitable given the nature of the neighborhood and community. The uses allowed in residential agricultural RA district are not harmonious with uses currently in place in the area. This area is primarily characterized by low-density detached single-family housing and accessory uses. Many of the uses allowed in the RA district would conflict with those among adjacent parcels and the surrounding community. I can still recommend a place for a ride. I motion to recommend approval of this request to rezone the specified parcels to the zoning district requested in the application based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the Board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning request presentation, and may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
I second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the application for case number 2022-24. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote's unanimous. The planning board will make a recommendation to the county commissioners that the request to rezone or to change the zoning map be approved.
And for the record, real quick, based on the commissioner's schedules, that meeting would most likely be the January meetings, but we are going to try to request the December meeting if possible, but traditionally, they have not held it for, because they only hold one meeting that month. So it'll most likely be the January meeting when they hear that recommendation.
Marcy, do they understand that the commissioners can overturn our decisions?
I believe Lynn explained that to all the applicants involved, but yes, they can agree with the planning board, they can disagree with the planning board, they can agree and change the reasonableness, they can, they can do what they'd like to do.
But they can't kill us.
They can't.
And do.
I don't want them to walk away.
They might be able to.
Yeah. Well, yeah, you're right. I just want, don't want them to walk away and know that, that we've done this.
Yeah, as always, in general disclaimer, the planning board decision is the only final in quasi-judicial settings, so this being legislative matter, it's still the Board of Commissioners will have the final say.
We did do our part, though.
Under new business, we have no new business, we have no old business. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Vote unanimous, this meeting is now adjourned.